Colleagues, we've got two things. First, we're going to hear the verbal report on DNA and we also have folks from the jail section of the LAPD to present on the issue of Prop 69, what to do when January 1, '09 comes around and we have to take more offender samples. Thank you for being here. Then we're going to go into brush clearance. I will say it now and I will say it again. When we begin the brush clearance matter, when we do that, we're first going to hear from fire department, captain from the fire department. Then we have Ms. Jackson from the city attorney's office. I saw when I walked in. And there you are. Thank you. She'll give us a little sort of procedural overview, I guess. Then we will allow each of the appellant's to speak. If you are here to appeal a brush clearance matter, please fill out one of these cards. I think most of you probably already have. And then be aware, we will give you two minutes to present your case. So what you can do during the DNA matter is condense your tale of woe down to two minutes. Give us the important part. And just give us the important part, the moving pieces. We don't need any of the prologue. So let's have the DNA matter heard, which is item one on the agenda. And then Mr. Weiss is going to say item one on the agenda and then it magically appears. If he doesn't say it, it doesn't...
Mr. President, present verbal report relative to the status of DNA testing backlog and cold hits.
Good morning. Yvette Sanchez Owens, LAPD. I'll give you my regular weekly stats first. Currently, we have 236 cases as of this week of rape kits that have not been requested or that have, I'm sorry, that have been requested for analysis but not yet completed. We also have 277 cases other than rape kits that have been requested for analysis but not yet completed. We have a total of 7,158 cases, rape cases in property, that have not been requested for analysis. That's a total of 7,671 cases in our backlog right now, which is down 18 cases from last week, so we're making some positive steps there. So far this year, we have 506 cases of rape kits booked into property since January 1st, and of those, 389 have not yet been requested for analysis. So far, year-to-date, we have had 142 case-to-offender notifications out of CODIS. And I'll give you a little bit of update on the cases we've been able to tackle with the grant that you gave us, Mr. Weiss. So far, we have been able to handle 86 cases through that grant. Right now, we have nine cases in progress. So far, out of those 86 cases, 77 have been screened. Fifty of them were positive for biological evidence that could be sent on for profiling and they have been sent on. Six of those cases are currently under review for upload into CODIS. And so far, eight cases out of those 50 have been uploaded into CODIS and we're awaiting a hit on some of those cases.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Ms. Sanchez Owens. Lieutenant and Captain, do...
Yeah, I can go first. Speaking with respect to the jail and the DNA collection, as you know, in June 2005...
Captain, name, please.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. Captain Patrick Finley, F-I-N-D-L-E-Y. And June 2005, we started collecting samples on certain individuals qualifying felonies and misdemeanances. And at that time, we were collecting on an average of about 1,000 samples per month. Since that time, during this last year, we've been averaging about 200 samples per month collected. And the reason for that is, obviously, we have repeat offenders that have samples on file. State Board of Prisons started collecting, as does the Sheriff's Department. So the people that are coming back through the system, many of them already have samples on file. So January 1, 2009, we are going to be required to collect DNA samples on all felony arrests and any of the misdemeanances that are on active parole or probation and the other qualifying. So that will be an increase. We've estimated that it'll be about a 40 percent increase and then probably after a year, we'll level back off down to where we're currently at. So if there is any concern about us not collecting samples, that's not the case. Everybody, one way or the other, before they leave the jail system, will have a sample taken.
It wasn't a concern. We just wanted to know what you were anticipating, what plans you were making to make sure you were going to do it. We knew you were going to plan to do it. We're just, in terms of Mr. Zine had questions about resources and time, you know, person hours, how laborious a task will this be to deal with this 40 percent increase?
It's, you know, again, we were doing far more than that in the past, so it's, it will take a little bit more time to do, but it's nothing that we're not going to be able to handle.
Okay. Lieutenant?
Yes, Lieutenant Tia Morris from robbery homicide division. And in every category, as far as our hits, we're down. We have a decrease this time versus the same time last year. Our total CODIS hits are 151 this year versus 187 last year for a 19 percent decrease. Homicide hits, 17 versus 19 last year, 11 percent decrease. Cold cases handling 18 percent of those. Sexual assault hits, 85 versus 94 from last year for a 19 percent decrease. Cold case sexual assault unit is handling 44 or 52 percent of those. Rape special section is handling 13 or 15 percent of those. And divisions are handling 28 or 33 percent of those hits. All other hits, which include burglary, robbery, and two other miscellaneous hits that are not specified here, we have 49 this year versus 74 from last year and for a 34 percent decrease. And of the 151 CODIS hits year-to-date, RHD personnel is handling 60 or 40 percent of all of those hits.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Colleagues, do you have any questions on the, well, on any issues?
Just a couple for the captain. Captain Finley, on the training, what kind of training jail personnel go through and are they all trained to take the samples?
Yeah, all jail personnel are trained. We've had a couple of individuals that helped write the, or that actually wrote the protocols for it and maybe are the ones that provide the training. And then our training provides any in-service or any updates.
Is there a state standard, minimum standard, for the training? I'm concerned that some defense attorney is going to challenge the way that we take it, the way that we store it, to make sure that we're complying. Are there any post standards that they have addressed to DNA testing and storage?
There were instructions that come with the kit, which we incorporated into our training, but it's really very, very basic. Just a matter of putting a swab in the individual's mouth and, you know, taking it back out and putting it in the kit. I mean, there's...
Well, it sounds simple, but in a hospital, sometimes they give the individual wrong medication and there's serious consequences. The concern is that we're following a process, a procedure, and since it's going to be expanded, that whatever policy is in place, it's a uniform standard throughout the city and obviously throughout California for law enforcement agencies, because I can see some creative defense attorney challenging that, challenging the results of a DNA test, which then has obviously implications on the case.
But once again, these aren't tests.
No, they're not tests, but you're taking a sample. It's just like when you take a blood sample, a urine sample, a breath sample, and you do that chemical analysis. Oftentimes, the defense attorneys would challenge that. Was the blood stored properly? Was the urine stored properly?
But just, but just...
Hold on, Mr. Weiss. Wait until you have the...
The one thing, just, we talked about last time, that's just important to remember is that these swabs put you into the database...
Right.
...to prosecute someone for a case...
They have to have further. I understand that, but...
You'll take an additional sample and that's the one that gets matched.
Absolutely, but people are trying to challenge it. And the question I have is they can go back, and if I go back to the OJ case where they talked about the shoes and the shoes were in a box in the back of the detective's car, they didn't get booked into property until a day later, what I'm looking at is to make sure that we have this shored up, so we don't have that kind of situation.
I think the councilman just explained, there is a check and balance, and the check and balance is that on the tail end, if somebody is identified through CODIS based on what they collect in the jail, a confirming test is also done.
No, I understand the confirming test. I have no problem. I'm just concerned about the initial, that there's a protocol, that we're following a protocol, they're properly trained. Because I've been to court many times when they challenge anything and everything, the fingerprint, the analysis, this, the filing, the documentation of that evidence, the chain of custody, the chain of where it went from the individual taking it. Lieutenant, you can remember when you were an officer, you booked some evidence. Where'd you take it? Who'd you give it to? Who'd booked it? I mean, all that chain of custody, that's what I'm concerned, that we have a process in place. Since it's going to be expanded, that it can withstand the challenge of some individual who wants to attack that particular, because yes, there's a second test, but if they're going to say, well, this test was invalid, then they throw all the results out. I just want to make sure that we have ourselves covered, because you're talking about very serious cases. And I've seen the criminal justice system where it's attacked through some technicality and then that case is lost and it sets a new standard. So my focus on it is the policy, the procedure. Does that come from the state where we get the sample or does it come from a private contractor? Where we get the swab, does that come from...
Department of Justice.
So they issue it with the directions?
Correct.
Okay, so we're following the protocol as long, and every other agency collecting in the state of California is following the protocol from DOJ?
I can speak for just us. Yes, we are. And again, with the expansion, there's nothing changing in our process or our protocols. We're just going to be, we're going to have a slight increase in the number of people that we're getting swabs from, but yeah, we are following protocol.
And then when that's placed and they will open that store, there's a process, a handling procedure for that?
Correct. It's then sent up to the state of California.
And they're sent up in batches of...
Correct.
Okay. Because someone could allege, I mean, they can allege all kinds of things. I just want to make sure whatever protocol we have, whatever procedure we have, is the proper procedure. Because I know that when a celebrated case comes around, they attack everything imaginable. And I just wanted to make sure that the department did everything that it was supposed to do to protect the innocent and find the guilt.
Actually, when we were doing this, our protocols were looked over by the subcommittee for the county, who has a DNA subcommittee, and they used LAPD's protocols as a model too for other agencies to follow. So I'm very confident our protocols do meet all the needs.
And then the personnel are trained when they go through the school? Are there any retraining? Or is you're trained one time and that's it?
Typically, they're trained one time. I mean, if there is any difficulties experienced, then we would provide remedial training. But yeah, they're trained one time.
So it's been very smooth?
Pardon me?
It's been smooth?
Very smooth.
You haven't had any challenges?
No.
Okay. All right. That was my concern, that we made that information known and had it protected. Because when the detectives do a case and they get that and the match is made, and then obviously, someone's going to get a defense attorney to try and find that they didn't do that particular act, and this could be one of the areas that they would attack. I wanted to make sure that we would be able to withstand that, withhold ourselves to a high standard. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
There were a list of questions that were submitted to my staff last week. Did you wish for me to address those questions?
Not now, but we do thank you. And I guess, all I would say is that I'm sure that you absolutely take it at your word and believe that you will be able to handle whatever the increase is. If for some reason, it's more than you expected, it's obviously very important. We'd love to have you keep us posted.
Okay.
I'm sure you do great. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
That's item one. Item two, will we continue along those segments or just continue?
Then we go.
Next.
Continue just fine. Let's go to item three, and first we're going to hear from the fire department. And Ms. Jackson from the city attorney's office. And then we're going to go through case by case. Once again, if you're sitting here and you have a chance to whittle your case down within two minutes, that will be to your advantage, because when the two-minute timer goes off, your case will end.
Item three, Board of Fire Commissioners' report relative to Fire Department's 2007 brush clearance assessment hearings report and proposed appeal decision and recommendations.
Good morning, Fire Department.
Good morning. I'll start off. We are here for our brush clearance appeals.
Your name, please?
My name is Battalion Chief Kerbret. I'm industrial commercial section. And the brush unit comes under with me. Today with me, we have Captain Knight and Captain Sabados who are familiar with the process, Ms. Janet Jackson who's familiar with the appeals. And in the audience, we have inspectors that have more specific knowledge of the specific properties if those questions arise. As you know, we have 130,000 parcels that we inspect each year. This year, we did that. 126 of those are private, 4,000 of those are public. We tell people that we're going to inspect them early in the year. The public properties are done first in April, and then on May 1st, we start our inspections. This year, 14,000 parcels were cited. 2,000 of them were non-compliant after they were cited. 1,200 of them were cleared by our brush contractors. We had approximately 132 appeals during our appeal stage for the fire commission. We had 103 that were denied. There was no change. 24 were a partial change or they reduced the fees for some reasons, and all fees were waived on five parcels. These were done on behalf of the fire commission. And with that...
I'll take it from there unless there are any specific questions.
Question, looking at previous years, within the statistical same realm numbers?
Yeah, that's about the same as it's been in the past.
I'm Janet Jackson, Deputy City Attorney, and I am general counsel for the Los Angeles Fire Department. I'm just briefly going to go over the overview of what the brush clearance process consists of. Pursuant to Section 5721.07 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, the presence of uncontrolled hazardous vegetation presents an increased danger of fire and thus constitutes a public nuisance. When such a condition exists, the fire department, after notifying the property owner, may enter the property and remove or abate the nuisance. As Chief Kerbret indicated, in April, brush clearance sites and opens. In April, a mass mailing is sent out to residents that live in the very high hazardous fire zone, and that zone is determined by code. In May, a brush task force made up of firefighters does inspections in the very high hazardous zone and issues notices of non-compliance to any residents that have brush that is a danger or nuisance. At that time, they were issued a notice of non-compliance and told that they will be re-inspected within a specific time limit and that they should have the brush cleared. And this is the same process they go through year after year if you live in that area. A second inspection is then done after the time has been given to give homeowner an opportunity to clear the property. And at that time, if the property has been cleared and it meets the requirements of the fire department, they're issued a clearance notice. If not, they are cited for non-compliance and they receive a notice telling them that they will be re-inspected and they will have fees assessed to them if they do not clear the brush. At that point, if they are non-compliant, those inspections are transferred to the brush task force. And this is the yearly brush task force that handle all the property that has not been cleared after a second inspection. They are then inspected again and given another notice of non-compliance and an opportunity for a city attorney hearing. At that point, if the homeowner so desires, they have an opportunity for a city attorney hearing. At that hearing, which is held in Van Nuys, they actually meet, the homeowner meets with a representative for the fire department. And that's a dialogue where they're given an opportunity to discuss what needs to be done and to provide any kind of information that they need or if they have a question about whether or not something constitutes a hazard or a nuisance, they're advised by the fire department at that point. There are very few instances where a city attorney is actually brought down to the city attorney hearing, although it's called a city attorney hearing. And they generally come down when requested by the fire department and the homeowner to resolve any dispute. At the conclusion of the city attorney hearing process, the member, the homeowner is given an opportunity for an extension if that is the determination that they needed. Otherwise, the property moves forward and it is assigned to be cleared by city contractors. There's a list through the RFP process where contractors are awarded a contract to be, you know, the city contractors to clear any brush. There's a list that's maintained and they bid on particular packages that come up. So if your property has not been cleared, you've completed the hearing process, you then, your property is sent out to bid. Contractor bids on the process and it is assigned to be cleared. After the property is cleared, the homeowner receives an invoice for the charges that now include the cost to have the brush cleared, as well as the administrative costs, as well as the non-compliance fees. Once they receive this bill, they have an opportunity, the homeowner is told of its appeals rights, they have an opportunity for a written process for the non-compliance charge. That's the specific charge that they have received when they have not paid for the, or they've caused to have a re-inspection. That is a written process, a written appeals process, and the board is the final determination of that. So it does not come before this committee. What comes before this committee are the clearance assessments. That is where the homeowner is given an opportunity to come in for an appeal. An appeal by code can be done by the Board of Fire Commissioners or, as they have done in these particular cases, have designated the hearing responsibilities to a hearing officers. There are three hearing officers that are used as part of the process. They are two main hearing officers with the rotation of an emergency hearing officer, a third one should someone come in ill or sick. And in the hearing, as I start to ramble a little, the homeowner has an opportunity to come in for a hearing. The hearings are scheduled every, by notice, and they are given approximately a 30-minute hearing. They have 15 minutes to present their side or anything in their defense. The hearing officer questions the representative from the fire department. At the conclusion of that process, the hearing officer drafts a written report, and that written report goes to the fire commission. The fire commission has an opportunity to accept it, reject it, modify it, or send it back for more information. In this particular case, the fire commission has accepted all of the recommendations of the hearing officers, and they are all before you. The reports are before you.
Thank you very much. I say to the colleagues, to the people in the audience, we have 15 appeals that I believe are here before us today, 15 public comment cards. That is a very high number of cards for this hearing. We usually have no more than half a dozen, although I don't believe that when you hear the stat of over 100,000 cases, that it is a statistically meaningful number. It's a meaningful number in terms of how we're going to spend the next couple hours this morning. So I'd like to ask for, if you guys could make room at half of the table there, I don't care which of you depart, but this way we can leave fire folks at the table to hear the appeal. I'm going to call your name. When you have your name called, you'll have two minutes to present your case. Come forward, then we'll let the fire department respond, and committee members will ask whatever questions they have and make whatever motions they want to make. These are in no particular order, they're just the order of the cards. Carl Olson, you have the floor.
The subject property for Mr. Carl Olson is located on page seven of your booklet.
Page seven.
Page seven of the blue book. Thank you for that. Oh, well, for you, we didn't give you a blue one.
Yeah. What's the deal?
Zine got the secret blue one, you got the...
You got the yellow one.
I got the yellow one, yeah.
Okay. We'll find it. I got his. I got his.
We have more copies if we need them.
Okay, you ready, colleagues?
Thirty-two. Wait a second, Mr. Smith, lift it forth.
No, I got it. It's different pages and everything.
The same as this?
Oh, thank you very much.
This is thirty.
We get delivered a yellow book.
No, no. The yellow book is a non-compliance, the blue book is for the brush clearance. I believe there's one. We have extra copies.
Be on the same page. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zine, ready?
Ready.
Take it away, Mr. Olson.
Thank you very much, Councilman Weiss and Councilman Smith and Zine. In my particular case, you have already received in your offices a black binder with all the background, a lot of facts in the case, and a lot of the things that were done not just on this particular property, but also a lack of due process, which paints everything that the fire department did in this situation. As you may know, they give you a lot of vague demands. They say lots of vague things, but don't put anything in writing in specific. There are three occasions in my particular situation when, I think it was Battalion Chief Kerbret and Captains Knight and Sabados were actually sitting or standing right on my patio, and I was asking them, what exact plants do you want out of here and which don't you want? And would you put it in writing? So we're all agreeing on that. They refused to do that. And so they left me with, I don't know what it is that you're asking for. They did send around their contractors, and the contractors cut down six live green trees. They were never even mentioned in any of the inspection report. They eliminated about 1,000 square feet of live bamboo that was 100 feet from anything. And they had no, they didn't even have a fire inspector on the property when they demolished all this. In addition here, you have a new little thing from me today about the process. You may be interested that the district attorney is investigating the fire commission's last meeting when they considered all of these things for Brown Act violations. The city attorney and the fire commission do not have any written memorandum of agreements as conducting these, you know, so-called city attorney hearings. There's no due process there. The fire department does not even have a budget to give you.
Okay, so Mr. Olson, you've got claims about process and they didn't give you, they didn't tell you in writing what trees had to go. Anything else? Bottom line's...
Yeah, yeah, that and all the other due process problems.
Okay. Fire Department, due process. Take it away.
Yes. Mr. Olson was inspected actually on May 21st of 2007. His property was found to be in violation with fire department brush clearance requirements, and he was issued a notice of violation. The property was then issued a second notice of non-compliance, and a city attorney hearing letter was issued on July 20th of 2007 because of the re-inspection showed the property still remained in non-compliance. In fact, Mr. Olson did contact the brush clearance unit and was stating that he could not understand our notices and that they were too vague for him to understand. We verbally told him exactly what needed to be done. We actually sent him in his second notice of non-compliance to trim up some of the bamboo and some other things that he needed to do there in his property. Mr. Olson said that he still could not understand that information as well. So we had inspectors to go out there and physically show Mr. Olson, I myself, including my commander, Chief Kerbret, and Captain Sabados here is present with me. And we physically went over Mr. Olson's property and explained to him, this is what you need to clear in order to be in compliance. This is what your notice is referencing. He kept saying that he wanted our exact words in writing. I said, sir, you have your exact words in writing, you have your notice of violation, and we are now explaining what that notice of violation is to you. Mr. Olson has completely and repeatedly refused to clear his brush clearance, and therefore the property was posted and the property was subsequently contracted on October 29, 2007. We have photos in our files and our records that indicate those hazards that were there on Mr. Olson's property, and he was assessed $2,300 for the cost of the clearance plus the administrative fee of $982.
Captain, just so one thing is clear on this particular item, sometimes we have items come before us where the individual does not live at the property in question and issues arise that, oh, I just bought this property... and issues arise that, oh, I just bought this property and I was never there to see the notice posted or whatever. Is this the resident, the residence of Mr. Olson?
Mr. Olson resides at this property.
So there's no issue here in terms of seeing things posted and...
That's correct.
Knowing that it's your house and your stuff. Did Mr. Olson receive as much, if not more, process than the thousands and thousands of other people in the city who go through this every year?
Absolutely.
Any other questions, colleagues? Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Olson, how long have you owned this property?
Well, since 1995.
Ninety-five, so who's cleared it those last 10 years?
I've been there doing whatever needs to be done.
So you understood the process?
Yeah.
And why is it this year you didn't understand the process?
Well, they came up with requirement, no, I didn't understand the process because in previous years, they didn't go through this, this thing about involuntarily clearing it without telling you in advance what it is exactly that they wanted moved, especially the big stuff.
But you knew that for the last 13 years, you knew what needed to be cleaned and did it evidently.
Well, you see...
Nothing's changed this year in our regulations, so what, between 2007 and 2008, what is different for you that you didn't understand?
Well, they wanted it exactly done because it is very, very vague as to what particular plants...
But you understood, you understood the vigorities last year and did it.
Well, last year, they didn't cite me for anything.
Yeah, because you did it.
Yeah, the previous one, I don't know what it was.
But you did it last year, so why didn't you do the same thing this year?
Well, I'm not going to cut down my own six trees and 1,000 feet of bamboo. They didn't, I don't believe that's what they're asking for, but they did it anyways.
But I'm saying, you did it last year correct with no violations, why didn't you do the same thing this year?
Well...
And you would have been fine.
What I did this year was basically the same thing as the previous year, a very bunch of little trimming, which was fine. And we had a certificate of clean by owner, and for some reason this year, excuse me, I'm choked up, they thought that was insufficient.
Inspectors, when you went to the site, was it partially cleaned, just not to your satisfaction? Is that the issue then?
No.
No, last year when we made the initial inspection, there were, there was a lot of dead material on the property. The bamboo that he's referencing, some of it was live, but there was a lot of dead material in it, which is, in our view, a fuel for a fire. The trees had all been unmaintained, branches needed to be trimmed up from the ground, a lot of dead palm fronds throughout the property, and those were specific items on his notice. We did not have, we generally say, trim up branches from trees. We don't usually go into the process of identifying what type of tree and the exact location on the property, otherwise our process would bog down.
So the written notice had those notifications?
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Olson, on your correspondence, you cite illegal and outrageous fees and costs. You also referred to a kangaroo court at the fire commission meeting was embarrassing, a kangaroo court. But looking at the specifics, and I know this area very well, it's a fire area. We've had fires in that area, and if we don't clear the brush and we don't post those streets, no parking on red flag days, and those homes are burned, as has seen happen in Northern California, then people get outraged, why isn't something being done? So this is obviously done for your protection, your neighbors' protection. Heavily populated area, a lot of vegetation, and I understand that community because I live up in that area, so I know the issues. When I look at your allegations in the letter, I don't think the fees are outrageous, they're not illegal, and if we don't do this, then we're going to have loss of life and property. When I look at your statements here, you're challenging the system, and the system is one designed to protect the properties and to get compliance. They went to the site, they give you notices. Now, maybe you want them to say, this tree and this plant, and maybe they're not going to go into specifics, but common sense would dictate to clear the mess. And obviously, from their document and from your testimony, you didn't do it. And it's a $3,282 tab, which is a lot of money. But the fact of the matter is, it's for the protection of your property and your neighbors and your residents. I have one question for the fire department regarding the contractor.
Yes, sir.
How are the contractors selected and is the fee structure the same or do they differ? Is it by acreage? How is that assessed, the cost of the clearance? Because this particular one is 2,300 plus a $982 administration fee. Is there a standard or does it fluctuate with acreage, et cetera? And who determines that?
It's based on the size of the property and the amount of vegetation that needs to be cleared. It's a bidding process where a contractor submits a sealed bid, and we take the lowest bidder, and this was the lowest bidder for this property, $2,300.
So how many bids go into a property?
We get, we have approximately 20 contractors right now, so we can, we get at least 15 to 20 bids.
And then there'll be 15, 20 bids on Mr. Olson's property, and then you go through them, you take the lowest one. So this was the lowest bid of $2,300. Some of them were higher, the others, I assume, were higher than $2,300.
That's correct.
And is the administrative fee the same for all properties or is there a difference on that?
It's the same for all properties when that administrative fee became effective.
So administrative fee of $982 would apply to everyone, and the cost of clearance varies, but you're always at the lowest bid?
Correct.
Okay. And those contractors are selected through an open competitive process?
Through, they are selected through a qualification or RFQ process.
Okay. And then they're part of that?
Yes.
So some are getting more business than others because they're low bidding?
Absolutely.
And is there any charge back to the resident in addition to this fee or is that the bottom line, what they're going to be assessed?
This is all that are going to be assessed. There is a non-compliance fee that's assessed for, if you don't pass, if your property's not in compliance by the due date that you have given, and that non-compliance fee is $270.
So in this particular case, visit was made to the site, additionally, citation was issued, notice compliance, notice compliance. Due to further inquiry by Mr. Olson, fire personnel went to the site to give the view of what needs to be done, but not specific trees that need to be addressed, but just the general area.
Yes, sir.
Okay. How often does they send inspectors out on the follow-up, as they did in this particular case, to give a little more information to the property owner?
Normally, the property owner will be, anytime the property owner wants to call in and wants to ask for information, they can get an inspector, they can make arrangements for the inspector to go out there and meet at that location, and that's based on the agreement between the two. But in most cases, it's two to three times that the inspector actually goes out to that property.
And in this particular case, was there any extraordinary means that the fire department did to try to accommodate Mr. Olson?
We went out there several times, well, more than three, at least three, four to five times we went out there.
Trying to accommodate his concern?
Trying to accommodate Mr. Olson, yes.
And he just didn't understand what needed to be done?
He refused to understand what needed to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I move that we uphold the assessment and fee set forth by the fire department. Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Next item will be Andrew Cha. Mr. Cha, please come forward, sir. And you have two minutes to address the committee.
What page is this, Cap?
I have to see Mr. Cha, his APN number, Mr. Cha.
Sunset and Revelle.
Sunset, Revelle. Mr. Cha is located on page 99, if you're...
Ninety-nine.
One moment, please, Mr. Cha, I'll tell you when to begin.
Ready?
All right, take it away.
My name is Andrew Cha.
Speak into the microphone, please, Mr. Cha.
My name is Andrew Cha, I'm a member of Sunset and Revelle LLC. I think last August, we received the two notice of non-compliance. Actually, we owned the three parcels, 016, 017, 018. But last October, we received only two notice of non-compliance. Because fire department said, 016, you know, next parcel owner, 015, they use part of their parcel as of their garden. That's why they asked to the fire department, they want to clean their parcel. That's why fire department said, they issued only two notice of compliance. Actually, we, after finishing the all work done, I think around September, we called the fire department inspector, Mr. Woods, then he said, okay, they already knew that we did right job. You know, after that, we got another notice of non-compliance, then we called again fire department, they said, okay, we already, you know, know you did right job. You know, happening was like that. But this year, I think May, we received another notice of non-compliance property parcel 016, because 015 owner, they didn't clean their parcel after they promised to fire department they clean. You know, happening, that's why we cleaned all work done before due date. But fire department was taken picture, 016, they showed evidence for 017. We know well about that property. It isn't very hard to find the property line, because we went there so many times, we know exactly. That's why I submitted that picture and letter, that's it, sir.
Let me ask the fire department, what is the nature of this gentleman's complaint?
Sunset and Revelle LLC actually owns three properties, they are right next to each other. Property with parcel number 441601006 is not in this book because that property was actually cleared by his neighbor, who is actually encroached on his property, so it was not cited for brush clearance violations. The parcel that is directly next to that, number 17, was cited for brush clearance violations. No, I got the right one, thank you. Was actually cited for brush clearance violations.
That's 17538, the address?
It's a vacant lot. Page 99, you have it there?
I have 99, but then I got 101, which is...
Yeah, turn back one page.
No, I'm on 98, no, 99, 98, 97.
He has two properties here that were assessed.
Yeah.
If you look, page 99, 100, and 101 and 102.
Okay.
The property there on number 17 was the issue, was that one was never cleared by Sunset and Revelle. It was cited for brush clearance violations, a dispute between where the property lines were, actually where that property is, as Mr. Cha explained, that it's very difficult to tell where the property lines is. So a dispute where the boundaries of that parcel number 17 actually occur between Mr. Cha and the fire department. Parcel 18 was also assessed, but Mr. Cha and Sunset and Revelle LLC did clear that property. There was an issue with some hazards that were on an adjacent property that did not belong to Mr. Cha, and it was illegally dumped on his property. For that very reason, that issue was brought up at his hearing, and that is why parcel number 18 was actually waived by the hearing officer. But however, parcel number 17 still remained to be out of compliance and was subsequently contracted by the fire department brush clearance contractors. The fire department inspectors utilize maps by the LA County Assessor's Office to determine property lines based on its dimensions that are listed by them and provided by the county assessor's office, and it makes its determinations of where the property lines are. If a property owner has a dispute of where those property lines are based on the inspector's determination, they must admit some sort of evidence from a licensed surveyor showing otherwise. So it was an issue of the property lines with this parcel 17.
All right. Any questions on the item? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just for the fire department, did he make a good faith effort on some of the other parcels? You said we may have cleaned one of them, but...
That's correct. Parcel 18, he did make a good faith effort and he did well, and I think that was the conversation that Mr. Cha is referring to, that you, everything is fine on parcel 18.
So they did try, there's an issue about where the property lines are which needs to be resolved. Mr. Cha, how long have you owned this property?
Actually, we owned it 60 years.
How many years?
Six years.
Six years?
Yes, sir.
And in the previous years, did you have a problem determining where the property was?
Nobody asked anything over past 6 years. You know, this is first time we got letter from the fire department, actually.
So you obviously knew where the line was.
We know exactly the property line was. Also, the officers that 016 was cleaned the next parcel owner, but they didn't clean. That's why they didn't issue another notice of compliance this year, May. That's why we cleaned their parcel. You know, because probably was they, was taking picture their parcel, 016. Officers said their parcel was cleaned by next parcel owner, they didn't. Evidence was, we released another notice of non-compliance, that's why we cleaned already on this year, May.
That is for this year, 2008. He's, he said, that he states that he has cleared his property. I don't have evidence of that as of yet. Do we do a re-inspection?
Any other questions? Should we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay. Motion approved, I'm in favor of that.
Approved, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Are we all in favor of that?
I'm just wondering if he's made good faith effort, he has a history of being a good faith compliance, and just there's some issues about where this property is, if we shouldn't go ahead and charge him the assessment, but maybe waive the administrative fee.
He had 6 years, had the property 6 years.
Yeah, and, but there's issues about property line that they need to clarify.
Yes, sir. Do you want to make an amending to reduce the administrative fee or eliminate the administrative fee?
I'd make that motion if you, but if the two of you are willing to just do the assessment, I'll go along with that, but I just...
I think the man's had it for 6 years, he knows the property line by 6 years. That's...
I'm comfortable letting it sit with what the fire department recommended. There's, you know, I mean, I just, I just, I just think, people, if you come forward and you can show the government has done something really wrong here, then, okay. The fire department's working very hard to protect the people, the city of Los Angeles, and, you know...
Rio.
So, Rio. All right, done. Next item.
Thank you, sir.
Ternik Kajakian, I apologize if I've mispronounced your name.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Speak into the microphone, please.
Yes, my name is Ternik Kajakian, and I own the two lands that are located on Calniva.
Time out for one second, sir, I apologize. We'll run the clock back, we need the fire department to tell us what page you're...
Calniva.
Calniva, page 19.
We'll flip there, sir, and then you can, once we have that in front of us. All right, take it away, sir.
My wife and I bought these two lots in August of 2006. These are vacant lots, adjoining lots, there's no homes around it. We have never owned properties before, so I don't know what the procedure was, but I've maintained at the fire commission hearing that I never got proper notice or notice of the violation in 2007. We went to the hearing and I asked for a copy of the fire department's records, which show, and I just got them this morning, by the way, in the mail, which show that proper notice was not mailed to the address on one, and on the other lot, it shows that my request for waiver of the inspection fee or the appeal was granted for the following reasons. As fire department records show, mail returned, proper notice was not served, and appellant did not receive due process. For 2008, I had to call the fire department and make sure that they sent me the proper notice. They didn't. The lady faxed me the notice, I had it remediated, I had it corrected, everything was taken care of. So if I'd known in 2006, that's what, 2007, that's what I had to do, I would have greatly, you know, gladly done it. I appreciate the fire department's efforts in keeping the property safe, but if I had the opportunity, I would have done it. This year, I did it for both lots, cleaning the entire lots for $1,400.
So the gentleman says he didn't receive the notice, is that the nature of this appeal?
It seems so, it seems so, sir. What has happened here is we send the property owner, that's on record with the county assessor's office, and that indicates that it was an address that was no longer good for Calniva Lands Incorporated.
So, um, wait, so, to which address did you mail the notices in this case?
The address we have here is on Ventura Boulevard.
15915 Ventura Boulevard.
Yes.
And you got that address, because that's your, that's the way you do it, from the computer system, from the county assessors, which was, now, is that your address?
The street number is the same, but the suite is missing. So, and apparently, somebody asked, I'm sorry, I didn't submit this to you guys because I just got it this morning, it says, on 8/7/2007, Harold Fleischman from Encino Law Center, where notice was sent, came by and said, there's no Calniva Lands Inc. at that address.
No, 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 no. What's your address?
My address is 15915 Ventura Boulevard, Suite Penthouse 1, not Suite 1.
Penthouse 1.
Not...
All right, and what's the address on the official record of your property?
Penthouse 1, 15915 Penthouse 1.
that got confused, but keep in mind also that we serve the property owner by two ways. One is by mail of the address that's on record, and also by posting the property. This is a vacant lot, and the property was posted to give serve notice also to the property owner.
When and for how long was the notice up on this property?
I'm sorry?
When was it posted, and for how long did the notice stay up?
Let's see. The property was posted on September 11th of 2007, and on October 5th, 2007, the property was contracted.
When was it cleared?
On October 5th, 2007, cleared by the contractor, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, do you ever go to your property?
Yes, definitely.
Did you see the notice on your property?
I have not.
No, 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 no. Did you see the notice?
No, I did not.
Where do you live, sir? Your residence?
I live in Tarzana.
What's your address at Tarzana?
5211 Meca, M-E-C-C-A Avenue, Tarzana, California 9135.
Meca's near Reseda Boulevard.
Yes.
And the location of the property on Ventura, where's that near?
That's Havenhurst and Mulholland.
Yeah, but the low, the, yeah, the property is, the property's close to Mulholland. Property, the address is, the mailing address on Ventura Boulevard, the property is up-
But you live on Meca, the property is, and your business is on Ventura, and then you're up on Calniva.
Right.
Okay, so it's a distance away from where you live.
Right.
A distance away, okay, I understand.
Plus, it's vacant land, it's nothing to go see, I mean, you know.
How large is the posting that you post at the property?
The posting is an eight and a half by 11, red.
And where's it posted?
It's posted right there on the front of the property, on the property itself.
They stake it?
They stake it, yes, sir.
I still want to, I just want to understand, if you go to the county assessor, and you ask, who is the owner of record, what precisely will the county assessor tell you?
It is based, we utilize a computer system that shows that it's linked up with that APN number, and it gives an address on record, and that is the address that we utilize. We make several attempts to contact the property owner on record.
No, because I, I'm just curious, I mean, what is the precise way, I want, could you guys agree or disagree on the precise way the property is listed with the county assessor? What's the precise address? The precise mailing address?
The precise mailing address is what we have here on record here, sir.
Which is after BLVD, there's a number 1?
Yes.
No, it's not, because I have-
Do you have, do you have the exact registration from the county?
Yes.
May I approach?
Sure.
Well, he's kind of, Captain, if mail is returned, do you keep a record of that?
Yes. We do not show a record of return on this property.
You do not show a record on this return?
No, sir.
All right, so you've just handed me a supplemental property tax bill for 2006, where after BLVD in the address line, there's a number sign, then the initials PH, and then a 1. Is this a mail drop, or is it an actual, is it your office?
Well, and did you say you have this year's notice?
I do, but I didn't, I paid it, it's all.
Yeah, I find that interesting, is because we print right off of their computer, so if it says PH1, it would have been mailed to PH1, I would think.
Do you have it as PH1 in your records, or just the number 1?
Our records just indicate just 1.
There's no Suite 1.
That's weird. How about we refer this back for further investigation?
Well, we're going to ask, I'm going to ask you to hold off on this for a second, and we're going to maybe ask Ms. Jackson for some advice. Follow the case of the missing PH, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, I have been following it, sir.
What's your take on this?
It sounds like there is a confusion as to the address, and it is possible for it to not have been delivered, although the property had been duly, you know, duly posted. I do think that there is some question as to the notice that the homeowner has received.
I move that we find for the homeowner, landowner, and dismiss the fees. I think there's enough question, if you post it with a stake, and it gets vandalized, blows away, he doesn't travel by there every single day, I think there's enough evidence to show that while there was no ill intention, they had the wrong suite number. 1 is different than PH1.
You know, I'd like to, Mr. Jackson, I'd like to hold this item until the end of the agenda today, and here's why. I think with what Ms. Jackson said, I think we can all agree that for no fault of anyone's, there's some issue on this case of the missing PH. I'm not going to go so far as though as to agree with what you said about the property, you know, the posting on property, because there's a reason the law has that as a backstop. It's supposed to mean something, and when people own property, particularly in the hills, it's not a good thing for society if they become truly absentee landlords and let the thing go to, go to seed. I mean, you have to, if you own property in an area like this, or any area, you really have an obligation to visit your property occasionally. So I want to, I don't want to act on this without hearing the other items that we're going to hear today, want to see if there are any other similar cases so that we deal with similar cases in a similar way. So let's just push this one off to the side, and we'll get back to it at the end of the agenda.
Well, since we're probably two hours on this, if we want to notify the appellant, unless you want to wait here for the rest of it?
If you could just wait till the end of the hearing and hear what else comes up, I'd appreciate that.
All right.
He just, he randomly had his card at the top of his head.
He's lucky, man.
All right, well, or he isn't, but anyway. Okay, the next case, I see two cards of the last name Aslan on Stradella. And before you begin, gentlemen, this is Aslan on Stradella, I see it tabbed in my book, I believe, which means that it, this is on page 69, is that correct?
Let me confirm.
Page 69, let's see here.
No, you wouldn't know, the fire department would know.
I don't see that on page 69, sir. I can see your APN number, I can-
I see, no, on 69 in the blue book, I see Aslan Bussoffer Trust, 1356 Stradella. Blue book.
Just a second. Yes, page 69.
Okay, all right, who's going to speak?
Me, but my father might also intervene if there's something-
Well, why don't you try to, let's just keep it two minutes, once you take it away, and if, each one of these can be covered in two minutes. Take it away.
Okay, well, we received our notice for brush clearance this year, and first thing I would like to point out are the photographs that are on all the copies that we've distributed out, and if you go to the third page, the picture on top, you'll notice that it's a rather steep hillside, and you can see where erosion took place.
Just speak. Tell us what the nature of your complaint is.
Okay, the nature of our complaint is that we, of course, were served with the notice for brush clearance, but our hillside was with green brush. It wasn't brush that was of a dangerous nature, and if you look at the pictures, you'll notice here that all of the brush here is green brush. It's not dead brush, it isn't brush that would cause a fire hazard. However, the fire department had asked us to clear the brush, and that is the nature of our complaint. Also, we had enlisted our geologist, because we are having a retaining wall put to contain the erosion that's taking place on the steep hillside, and if you look there, the first item here that we've distributed out, it says Ralph Stone and Company, and it's dated May 21st, 2008, and this letter indicates that the brush should not be cleared, and this is from Mr. Rollins. He indicates that the vegetation protects the slope from rain impact, which weakens the soil and could cause, and which actually causes erosion.
Okay, so your claims are that it's green, not brown, and that the city, the choice the city faces, whether it'd rather have your house burn, or whether it'd rather have it roll down the hill. Is that, is that, is that the nature of your case? Anything else?
Well, the nature of our case is that the geologist has backed up what we think.
Yeah, any other claims?
I'm sorry?
Those two claims?
Those are the claims, and also, I would just like to point out, we've distributed the geological report to you. You happen to go to page 4, the first paragraph, it says that the slope below the side is difficult to view as it is steep and densely planted. However, it says there's creep and shallow sliding appears to be occurring. There's about five feet of loose slide debris, which was encountered, and it says all of the top of the slope, which is the area in question, was failing.
Okay, all right.
Just one last thing I'd like to point out, on page 2 of the geological report, it says here, on the area where you can see where we highlighted it, says the presence of the structures, which is the retaining wall, as well as their configuration suggests pass instability along the top of the slope.
Okay, fire department, take it away.
All right. The subject property was actually inspected on May 19th of 2007, and was noted for brush clearance violations, and was issued a second notice of noncompliance on November 19th, and then a work order was prepared, and the property was contracted by the fire department brush clearance contractors, and completed on January 9th of 2008. Now, at the hearing, it was mentioned about the erosion situation and the geological report that they had submitted, along with photographs. The hearing officer and the fire department reviewed both of those items that they were submitted, excuse me. However, when a geo report has been done by a private, a private agency, that is to be submitted to the city geology for approval, and then it would be omitted from our brush clearance because of geo requirements there. And that was not approved by the city, and that, so therefore, the brush clearance commenced, and he was-
Same, but did the city have the opportunity to weigh in on this private geo report?
Yes, there are certain properties that the city geologist has approved as properties that, due to the slope and erosion situations that have happened in the past, certain amount of brushing, brush clearance would pose a greater threat to the stability of the hillside. That's the city geology has to approve that report, and we do not have that on file that was never submitted to the city geologist, so therefore, brush clearance was completed.
It was never submitted, or it was never approved by them?
Never, never approved by the city geologist.
So it was submitted?
From our records, it was never submitted.
Okay, so that's my, that's my question, in other words, is this just a case where they didn't, for whatever reason, go through the procedure? But if the procedure had been gone through, there might be a different outcome? Or is this a case where the procedure was followed, and a substantive decision was made by the city geologist that this property did not qualify?
Oh, okay, no, no, the, it was, the procedure was not followed.
Okay, what is the procedure that they should follow?
They should submit this to the city geologist for its approval.
And how long and laborious and challenging a process is that?
I can't give you an exact answer on that.
But people do it.
But people do it, we do have some that are on file. The numbers in regards to geologist reports, most of them, there is some sort of brush clearance that can be done, regardless of the angle or the stability of the hillside.
If Mr. Smith doesn't mind, let me ask Mr. Smith's question, which is, how long have you owned this property?
We've owned it for around 20 years, roughly.
Okay, so what have you done in the past to comply with brush clearance?
We have complied in the past, but this, there was no dry brush this time, that's why we didn't-
No, 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 you got to answer my question, which is, what have you done in the past to comply?
Well, we've cleared the brush in the past. We've cleared brush that was actually a fire hazard.
All right, and that didn't pose any geo issue in the past when you cleared that brush?
Well, that was brush that wasn't holding anything, because it was dead brush, but this was not the case this time around.
Okay, what about his claim that this is green and not brown?
That sometimes is confusing to some property owners, they believe that because the vegetation is green, as though it's still not hazardous. Any large or massive overgrowth of vegetation, whether it's very dense, can still pose a threat to structures, as this property is located within 200 feet of structures, and it was determined by the fire inspector and the fire department that it constitutes a hazard.
Is the, is the report that I have here, that you, the geo report, is this something that was prepared subsequent to your noticing by the fire department here? Or is this something that predated the fire department's work?
The geo report was prepared in April of 2006.
Okay, and so when were you cited for clearance?
We were cited, let me see.
When were they cited for clearance?
He received a notice of violation on May 19th of '07.
So you have a report, why do you have a report that predates the clearance? Well, just because you were doing work?
Right.
Just because you were doing work there, I see.
Right.
And so subsequent to the fire department's noticing the property, is there any subsequent work by your geo?
Yes, that's the letter that I have here, that you have on top-
The May 21st, 2008 letter?
Right.
Where the, your geologist recommends that you do not clear the vegetation, because it will increase slope erosion, that's the one, right? And you have, and this is, so this just hasn't been submitted through a city process? Is that all this is?
That's correct.
Okay, if we require them to go through the city process, can we hold your assessment in abeyance till we find the results of that process?
Sure.
Have you ever seen this one before, Mr. Smith?
This is a unique one.
No, you have received that, hold on.
No, 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 don't, I'm not asking you a question.
I would think that since the work has been done for this year, we should go ahead with the assessment, and direct them to building safety for future years if there are slope issues. The work was already done this year.
That's correct.
And you've done it in the past, should have done it this year. I don't think we should waive it this year. Just really direct them to building and safety to resolve that issue.
Well, I would, I'd just like to point out that the brush that was dry last year was cleared, it was uprooted, there was no dry brush this year.
No, 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 no. What was the nature of the work that was done this year?
There was just a brush, our photos indicated it was just brush clearance, whether it be green or brown, there are certain vegetations that are native, that it doesn't matter if they are green, it still is very hazardous in fire conditions, and so that amount of brush that allows to grow that dense and that, that much, needs to be trimmed back. And so our contractors were able to access the property and be able to clear it.
Well, I'd like to point out that Mr. Rollins is a qualified geologist, he knows that the fire department had, was going to look at the property, and he knows, if you look here, he's talking about the existing canopy at the time that we were served-
No, I get that, I get-
-that protects the slope from rain impact.
I get that.
He doesn't say anything here in regards to-
I get, sir, stop, stop, I get that. In these oddball situations, is there a way to inform property owners that they need to, they want to get a, basically a doctor's note here, that they need to submit that through proper channels?
Yes, if they call in, and they, like he is stating here now, if they call into our office and say that I, I got your notice of violation, and we have erosion issues there that rise concern, we will direct the property owner then to the proper channels to submit that report for approval.
Did they make those claims known at a, at a timely point in the process?
According to the fire department record, the issue of the geo or erosion control issues was not brought up until the hearing.
Okay, was not brought when, when they did the so-called city attorney meeting?
The, wasn't brought up until the, the hearing by the brush assessment hearings, where they came into a peer, but they were issued notices of violation prior to that.
When did, did you bring this to their attention?
We brought this to their attention when we had the meeting with them.
When was that?
I don't remember the exact-
Before or after the clearance?
Before.
Our record doesn't indicate that, all right? Our record doesn't indicate-
Record that shows that you brought it to their attention before?
Well, it was a verbal conversation we had with them, we-
No, but you, did you, did you give them a copy of the-
Yes, we did give the copy of that, and the proof of that is, if you look over here on the third page of the first items we sent you, there's, it says, "Report and proposed decision on assessment hearing for brush clearance," and it says, let me see here, yeah, "Under substance of protest," it says, "The second sentence, the appellant provided information from Mr. James Rollins, Vice President of Ralph Stone and Company, a geotechnical, environmental, and civil engineering firm. Mr. Rollins states that the appellant's property has suffered from erosion of-" Mr. Rollins states that the appellant's property has suffered from erosion of soil and removing vegetation canopy will weaken soil and increase erosion.
Yes, sir, but that, that, this was at the hearing that took place on May 28th of 2008. The clearance had already been done. I believe the question is, is, uh, was this, that this happened before the, the clearance was done?
Well...
We don't show a record of that, that's what...
Your last chance, we've, we've done a lot on this time. Did you, did make, did you give them geo information before the clearance was done?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have proof of that?
Well, the, the, we gave them this letter before, they had this letter, which is...
Do you have proof of that? You didn't, because that's May of '08, that's what the Fire Department is pointing out to, that's before the, it's not before the clearance.
The clearance was done on what date? I don't remember, I don't know exactly what date it was done on.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move Mr. Smith's recommendation, which is that we do the assessment here and in the future, uh, if you could let them know what the process is that they should go through to make this claim in the future about certain types of brush not being subject to clearance from there, or certain types of vegetation not being subject to clearance from there for erosion purposes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that, is that, uh, yeah? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, that's the committee's action. Thank you for coming this morning. Next item is Sharon Crofina. Is there a, is there a Sharon Crofina from Flicker Way? Okay.
Look at this. She's not listening. Mr. Weiss, do you have a number?
Uh, one moment, Fire Department's going to tell us what page you are to be found on, Ms. Crofina.
Um, your APN, ma'am, I'm sorry. Perrin, okay, all right, uh, page 93.
Sorry?
Uh, 93.
Take it away, ma'am.
First, I wanted to thank everyone for being here today and I do appreciate all the efforts that the Fire Department puts out. It's really wonderful, I must say. Okay, um, first of all, on page eight of the, of the handout that I have there, I'd like for everyone to turn to that.
Ma'am, we're going to find it, but why don't you just tell us, what is the nature of your complaint here?
Okay. Uh, the nature of the complaint is that I've done a lot of brush clearance on the property and I wanted to illustrate that in the photographs.
Just, just tell us, tell it...
Okay.
Just, everyone can explain in just a few moments, few words, what the issue is. It's not that hard.
Okay. Um, there was a tree that I cut back underneath the tree five feet to make sure it cleared, uh, that compliance, and I put the logs right there, right next to the tree. And also, I had cut back two trees, I cut two trees down and, um, also I had cut the ground cover down to mulch and, um, let's see, and there's some representation of debris cleared on the driveway, there's a picture of that there too. There's also a large yucca plant I trimmed in two different areas, several different places, actually, more than one or two. And also, uh, there, at some point, while I was doing the, the brush clearance, the chainsaw had broke and I couldn't figure out how to fix it. And then finally, I did figure out how to fix it and I called a manufacturer and everything. It took a little while, though. And then when I returned to the site where the tree was cut down and, um, the tree that I had trimmed underneath with the logs sitting there, uh, the tree was removed and also the, uh, logs were removed. So, um, I did want to mention that I feel that because of me doing a, a good portion of the, uh, brush clearance, I felt that, um, perhaps the fees were, the fees were excessive. Also, they did reduce some portion on the, they did reduce some of the mulch, they did turn some of the larger leaves on the upper portion to mulch. And they also said they had trimmed an oleander, which I hadn't seen, but, um, basically, uh, the main thing I, I wanted to point out was that I had done a good portion of the brush clearance. That was my main point. Uh, Mr. Perrin also wanted me to mention that he is a war hero, he does have his Legion of Merit, distinguished flying cross with oak leaf cluster, and accommodations from De Gaulle.
Thank you very much for that. The essence of the appeal is that, as I gather, the contention that the property was cleared or was sufficiently cleared, what's the Fire Department's response to that?
Uh, yeah, according to our records, the, um, Fire Department actually went out there on May 10th, 2007 and noted violations that were there, was issued a notice, and then it was re-inspected on September the 16th of 2007. The, uh, property was then posted, uh, on November the 9th of 2007 and subsequently contracted in December of, to, the 10th of 2007. And what typically happens is some property owners begin to do work and normally, we work with property owners who do show, uh, an effort of trying to do their own brush clearance. However, the hazard still remains. And if you can see by the dates here, this is later in the year of our brush season and so, uh, even though the property owner may be working towards it, at some point, the Fire Department has to step in and say, "We have to complete the clearance." And this is what happens in this case. The cost of that clearance that was bid out was awarded at $2,200 with the administrative fee and she was assessed for this amount.
So you're, but, but, but your response to her contention that it was sufficiently cleared is what, in a nutshell?
I'm sorry, it's a longer time?
Her contention is that the property was sufficiently cleared and your response is...
Correct. Is that it was not, based on our inspection, that there was still hazards that were still remained and needed to be cleared and our department, when our Fire Department cleared those.
Where, where, Flicker Way, this is near where?
Sunset and Dohany.
This is a bird, bird streets?
I'm sorry?
Sunset, sorry?
Sunset and Dohany is the main...
Bird, bird street area.
Birdland, yeah, pretty much, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Colleen, any questions?
No.
Fine for the Fire Department.
Yeah, ma'am, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, the nature of your appeal is that you had done enough, in, in a nutshell?
I did see some work that they had done that I hadn't completed, which was just basically, um, turning some large leaves into mulch on the upper section there and they said they had cut back an oleander, but everything else I had done.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for that, that disagreement, ma'am, but we really need to, uh, go with the Fire Department's assessment of what needs to be done and when they ask people to do more, we really do need to ask people to do more, even if it's, because it's...
I don't, I don't mind that, it doesn't bother me, it's just that I, I had completed that work and that was done. And then they came and took the logs and they took, they cut, took back the tree and I had already done that part and, and everything else I had mentioned here, so I think that, um, some adjusted...
Are you saying, are you saying they did not do the work that they're claiming to do, claiming to have done?
The, the parts that I had mentioned I had done and the parts that I mentioned that they had done was what they did, so, um...
And that's what the bill would be reflective of, is the work they did.
I think that the bill was excessive.
Yeah. Well, it's always cheaper to do it yourself than face someone.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about, but if they're going to come by and...
That's why everybody's here.
Yeah, yeah, well...
And we appreciate that. Um, so, okay, I think, I think the, Mr. Zine...
No, I, right, aside this, I have a question with the Fire Department on the protocol. Once the area is cleared by the contractor, is there then another inspector who verifies that it's been cleared to a standard acceptable to the Fire Department?
Yes.
So there's another business...
There's a final inspection, yes.
At the Fire Department?
The contractor does not get paid for the work done until it's signed off by the inspector.
Okay.
Thing is complete.
Okay, because what she says is, she did partial, they did the other, and so there was another inspection following the completion of the contractor's work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, our action is going to be to approve the assessment, uh, set out by the Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case is Marie Buck, Buck Lyon. Again, I apologize.
Page two, 245.
245.
Okay, we have your case in front of us. Tell us what, uh, your complaints are about.
Okay. I'm a widow and I was going through a very bad depression last year. I did not live in that house very long time, I didn't know what was going on, I was being hospi- hospitalized, I lost my husband and I didn't know what was going on. So my, I have a gardener who cleans the back all the time, it's clean, but when I talked to Inspector Sieden, he said that I have to go further down and do all the cleaning. Then I hired those people, which I have all the pictures that it shows, that the guys are cleaning it and they have their signature in the back saying that they were the ones with the truck, everything, they are cleaning it. And this is like a weed, every couple of weeks where it comes on. Uh, so I have the pictures over here if I can approach?
Yes, ma'am.
And you can see that even then it's being cleaned, the new ones are coming out, every three weeks it comes out.
Hold your time.
Hold, sir.
Hold your time.
And there are trucks over here.
And these pictures...
Inspector Sieden told me that I have to go further down to clean it, so I hired those people to do the cleaning. In this house, I'm...
Ma'am, ma'am, could you... You need to speak into the microphone so it's on the record? Thank you, ma'am.
In this house, I moved in last year. So after, so my husband used to take care of everything, so I don't know what they meant. I, I talked to Inspector Sieden, he kept telling me, which I have the letter from him, "Don't worry about it, everything is okay, it looks good." And then I get this citation, I have no idea, which I cannot afford, I'm, I'm a widow and this is the letter, it says that I relied on the inspector's word. If I can bring this letter to you, sir?
Um, sure, but let me just, let me just ask you, um, the, hold the time, the work that's in the photographs, was that done before or after the Fire Department did clearance?
Uh, I really don't know about it because, as I said, I was, uh, being hospitalized back and forth, I was under depression. So I really, the date, it says October 20th, but I don't know when the Fire Department gave it to me, I have no idea.
Let me ask the Fire Department, is this a property owner who was making, uh, efforts to clear the property as far as your records show?
Well, uh, it seems as though that there was some conversation between the, uh, the property owner and the inspector who is responsible for the area. Um, the, according to our records, a conversation took place where, it's a very large property where she has to clear behind brush that's directly behind her home. Property extends down the hill a significant amount, that it is within 200 feet of a home that is below on the next street over. And that area was never cleared and then the area directly behind her home needed to be cleared. And of course, uh, according to her statement here is that when Inspector Sieden told her to go further down the hill, that would be correct. Further down the hill, meaning clear for 200 feet for the structure that's below. Um, our records indicate that the property still remained in noncompliance, uh, and was subsequently contracted and posted, posted on December the 5th and was actually contracted on January the 4th.
During, were you not available during those periods, ma'am?
Excuse me?
December and January, were you unavailable?
No, most of the time I was going hospital back and forth.
Well, that certainly...
It was a shock for me because he had a heart attack and I just, most of the time I was in the hospital back and forth, so I really didn't know exactly what's going on too. But, uh, even then, I talked Inspector Sieden, he kept telling me, "Don't worry, don't worry, next, next year I will explain to you exactly how far you have to go, I don't know." Then I hired those people to do the job in October, so...
Colleen, I'll let you ask whatever questions you have, I will say that, that, and, and Mr. Smith, you usually ask great questions and bring up things that I hadn't thought about, but this is someone who, at least so far on the record, appears to have tried to comply and appears to have a novel but very, um, understandable reason for why, uh, subsequent efforts to get them to comply might not have worked out, that I, that I feel sympathetic towards, uh, unless there's something about the case that, that you all see.
Do we lower the fear, do we eliminate the fear, or that the whole issue is the charge? There's a substantial charge.
How much additional work was done by the Fire Department? You'd already cleared part of it, did you just clear the additional portion?
According to our records, we actually cleared, there was some evidence of some clearance that was directly behind the house. There is a fence there that is not, that fence that's directly behind her house is not the end of her property, it goes all the way down. There was the work that our contractors did beyond that fence and then towards the end within 200 feet of the structure that was below the property.
I mean, I must say, I'm sympathetic to the notion of, of a woman whose husband, how long had you lived there with your husband, ma'am?
We lived together for 40 years.
So that her husband had taken care of it for...
He was taking care of everything.
So that, that period of time, I... Ms. Jackson, is there something you want to state?
I just wanted to make sure for the record that the committee had considered that they were, um, the proposed assessment was lowered by the hearing officer since the appellant provided documentation.
What was the original assessment? Because now it shows 1444.
What's it been?
Um, I think you may be on the wrong page there, she was not, she was not reduced.
Or maybe I'm reading on the wrong page because I showed the assessment at, originally at 1882?
Yeah, I believe, uh, the book that you have, Ms. Jackson, is actually on page, um, 251. See it's...
You have different page numbers.
Yeah, it's 251. That's a different, that's a different...
I apologize, you have different page numbers than everyone else is using.
That's why these hearings are always so exciting. I think Mr. Smith has...
At least we're all on the same book now.
Yeah. I guess we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I'd like to find out what it was lowered, was it was lowered...
This, her assessment was not reduced.
Mr. Smith, do you have a, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, I, I was going to say, it's obvious that the work was done for at least part of it and you understand now the situation, that we should just, I, I would move that we waive the administrative fee and just the cost of clearance and then in the future you'll know, you know, the boundaries of where you have to go.
Even then, when you see on, on the invoices that I paid those people to do the job, on this, can I say only one thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Uh, this, it's like a weed, every two weeks it comes up. Uh, I mean, uh, it's not that it's once a year it comes out, at the moment you cut it, it comes up again.
Well, we, we, our law is directed toward the high fire season, that's when we have the greatest risk and the law is really based on trying to get people to remove risk and that's why we do it, at the time of year we do it. We do it earlier in the season before the fires really start, hoping that everybody would comply. Um, and it's obvious that you have made attempts, I am sure, looking at that piece of property, that if you'd cleaned it, uh, it would have cost a lot more probably than the 1,400, but the city, uh, is a little high always, I mean, it's always in your best interest to do it on your own. You were gorging toward that but not far enough along that you hadn't gotten all the way down.
I believe you have, no.
And that's no fault of your own, I, don't, please, please don't feel guilty or anything, that's no fault of your own. So what we're trying to do is recognize the fact that the city had to come in and do part of the work, you'd done some of it, they needed to finish the job by the fire season. Uh, and I'm willing to say, let's waive all those administrative costs, all those things we add on, but the taxpayer's on the hook for the $1,400. That work's been done, we have to pay it, one way or the other. And so I think it, there's a recognition of the fact that you had done some of the work, that's why the fee is kind of low, looking at your property, $1,400 is probably a pretty low assessment, really. Uh, I would assume it'd be a lot more under normal circumstances. Anyway, my motion is just to waive the administrative 982.
Even then, Inspector Sieden says, "Don't worry about it, everything is fine." I keep calling him, he says, "Don't worry, everything is okay." He gave me the approval, verbally approval. Then he sent email to, and I don't know what happened to the email, I lost the email. If you talk to Inspector Sieden, he approved it already, so I took his word for it. I can't, I'm on social security, I cannot afford to pay that much.
There will be one additional opportunity for appeal, I would ask that the Fire Department have this inspector come and speak, uh, so we can clarify that issue.
Sure. Sure.
I have a question.
Mr. Zine.
The... If we were to waive the cost of clearance, who pays for that?
Taxpayers. It's taxpayers.
Does it come out of the fire department budget, general fund?
Yes, it does.
The fire department budget?
Yes.
Because the contractor's getting paid...
Contractor's getting paid, yes.
By the city? And then this reimburses on that cost that...
That's correct.
Okay. So, I would support that administrative fee.
So, Mr. Smith's... Here's what's happening, ma'am. We, as a committee, are going to decide that you do not owe the $982 that the city was charging for an administrative fee. We, as a city, as a committee, are deciding that you do owe the $1,444 cost of clearance. This matter will come to the city council meeting, which is when, Mr. White?
We're setting a council date of July 30.
Okay. So, on July 30, it'll be before the entire city council. Mr. Smith's suggestion, which is a good one, is to ask if the fire department can check with that inspector about whether a verbal approval or whatever was given to this property owner. If one was given and it happens, then maybe there will be a different outcome. If not, Mr. Smith's motion will stand. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is Robert Anderson.
What is his name? Who are you representing?
Cohen.
Cohen. Cohen is located, page 173. There are five parcels.
Hi. My name's Robert Anderson. I'm an architect and a business partner to Aaron and Isaac Cohen, who are the owners of the land listed. We've owned these properties for about five years and have always maintained them and then got this assessment last year. And when we met with the hearing officer and Inspector Sittens, we showed him the photographs, our bills that we paid the contractor two or three times. He came out to do that and they seemed to agree with us as far as the... Our attempt to clear the lots was, you know, good and so on that because they indicated, and they did on those letters, remove the cost of the clearance from the assessment. What I also thought we had an understanding was is there's seven little lots all connected here on Queens and four on Grandview and that we were going to be assessed for the administrative costs, one administrative cost on each. They did that on Grandview, but they did not do that on Queens. They ended up assessing it four times $982.
Okay. So, stop for a second. Stop, it's time for that. Is the fire department or the process waived the cost of clearance in this case?
It would be based on the determination of the hearing officer that was...
But did that happen?
That's...
Cost of clearance has been zeroed out here?
Yes.
Apparently, the cost of clearance has been waived.
And so, the only issue before us is whether he should pay one or multiple admin fees? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And what... As of this moment, how many admin fees has he been assessed?
Five.
Five. He has five properties, administrative fee for each property, five.
And was there some understanding that it would be less than five or is...
Would be one for each site because Mr. Sittens had to go up to each site and deal with them. And that would be 982 for the four lots, but it was really one on Grandview that had foliage underneath cactus. And then the other one on Queens were seven, but there were four of them in a row. They're 30-foot lots and that was also going to be one 982 thing. So, I get a bill for all that and I got a... I actually have the checks here.
Just make it clear to us, okay? How many admin fees do you think you should have been assessed?
Two.
Because that's two locations?
Two locations.
The lots...
And they're all connected.
Are all next to each other?
Yes.
So, each... So, that's per visit?
Yes.
And they're 30 feet wide?
The ones on Queens are 30 feet wide.
Okay. In response to that, the fire department says?
Yeah, I believe that that could be correct. Normally, historically, the hearing officers, when there are multiple properties like that, will look at the relationship of how close those properties are in relationship to each other. It appears that the properties are relatively close to each other, although it's over 55 acres. Normally, a...
Just let them get it.
Normally, if they're right next to each other, the inspector is already out there, already processing it, so they would be assessed one admin fee if the next property is right adjacent to it.
What's your recommendation today?
My recommendation is to waive three of the administrative fees and he be assessed the two.
Okay. So, the committee will assess two admin fees in this case.
Can I say one thing?
You just one.
I know. But there's also a $316 hearing one.
You just...
Does that still stay as one or two for those two properties? Because we had one hearing for the whole thing. It should be one and I have all the checks written.
Should be one.
Should be one.
Okay. So, that'll be one. Two and one. Two and one is the order. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. On to the next matter.
Well, John White, City Clerk. The assessments before us, all site admin fees of 982 per property and two of those five still will remain. The other fee he mentioned, where does that appear in the report?
That is in the noncompliance report.
Okay.
And that's the yellow book. That does not get heard here at Public Safety.
Thanks. Actually, no.
Before us?
No.
No. The noncompliance.
The 316? You gotta eat the other 316. City attorney says we have no jurisdiction.
Who does?
We...
The Board of Fire and Missioners. And it's been heard and it's fine. That's the great deal.
So, 316 and 290? Two and two. Two and two. Hey, look, you're walking out here with the big winner. Bye. All right. The next case is Roberto Rodan. I believe is...
A big winner.
I believe is...
A big winner.
And this is his handout.
He won the lottery.
Rodolfo Rodan. I apologize.
Rodolfo Rodan.
Okay. And he is on page, is it 255?
251.
251. All right, you have two minutes, Mr. Rodan.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jackwise, council members. Rodolfo Rodan is my name. This is a request for reconsideration on account of few items that were lacking in notifying the owners. Number one is the notice to the owner to be present at this inspection to be able to know exactly what was involved. This property is bounded... It's on an uphill and there's no access at all. This property is probably approximately from the street level, approximately 20 feet or more, and there's no access. It's a steep hill. The only access that we have is through the neighbor's house, which was permitted way a long time ago, belonging to my ex-wife. When it was sold, then we didn't have any more access to that. To the west of the lot is bounded by that Lot 28, which was... Belonged, used to be from my ex-wife and now belonged to Mr. Lee. To the northwest is Lot 27. Also, they both have access to that Estes Road. To the north of it is Lot J, which is up on top of the hill, also with the least access. So, this property here is on a triangular shape whereby it has to be clarified on which area that the department is trying to identify needs to be cleared.
Sir, so your two minutes are up and I just... I guess I've been asking people for their bottom line. Your bottom line is that you had... Is access to the property was the issue? Is that correct?
There's no access at all to the property.
But that's your issue?
That's the issue and another issue is the fact that I was not informed of the inspection and also identifying the area that to be inspected and the area that was cleared by the department. No boundaries, no identification of what they cleared.
Access and notice. Those are your two issues?
Yes.
Okay. Fire Department, access.
Yeah, our records indicate that the property was actually cited for violation on May 2nd of '07. And actually, there were some attempts to... That Mr. Rodan tried to attempt to contact the fire department for the same issues that he is raising, that he cannot access his property and would like to request extensions on gaining compliance to his property. The brush clearance contractors were able to access his property. Was explaining to Mr. Rodan that although he may have difficulty accessing it, it's still his responsibility. The hearing officer, listening to everything that Mr. Rodan had presented, did in fact decide to reduce his amount and waive the administrative fee, but however, the cost of clearance, he was still assessed for.
Okay. Any questions, colleagues?
No.
Did you talk to Mr. Lee, the new owner?
In 2007, Mr. Lee was... Did not allow me access. They were unfriendly. In 2008, I became a lot more friendly. I was able to do it. So, that's the problem I have. But another problem I have is to appeal the cost of clearance. The reason is because I was not able to see the boundaries they cleared because...
But they did.
I don't really know exactly. I don't have any evidence and proof.
But they did. So, I think in this case, the committee will support the assessment. Mr. Zine, are you there on this one?
Yes.
Okay. So, in this case, the committee will support the action of the fire department.
The boundary... Sir, the boundary to the north is a lot wider. Mine is a little only, so they may have cleared some portion of the other neighbors, which does not belong to me and that cost a lot of money, which is $1,000. It should not have been $1,000.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The next case is Erwin Barr. Pardon me, sir. Hold on while we find the page for your case. Is it 119? In my book, there's 119.
So, is your budget committee...
Sir, let me see your...
Fire Department, is it page 119?
119, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Take it away, Mr. Barr.
Thank you. I received the notice of noncompliance. I contacted the same person who had been clearing the lot for years. I paid him $600 and I figured everything was okay. I called the department and I said, "Am I okay?" They said, "Well, if you don't get a notice, you're okay." I never got a notice. However, I understand that they did mail one to me. I never received it. I live in a large apartment complex and this is really not the first time some of my mail has gotten lost. I've since directed them to send the mail to my son's home where I know I will receive it. I asked... I said that if I really... My lot was really not in compliance, I would owe the fee for cleaning it, but I was asking to have the administrative fee waived. I paid all of these fees in advance, according to what they suggested that I do. You'll notice them in closed pictures and you'll notice that in the pictures that I purchased from the fire department, it shows a structure right above my property or what they proposed to be my property. If you'll also look at the map from the planning department, you'll notice that there are no structures above my property. I strongly believe that there was a mistake in what property was tagged. One time when I... Well, anyhow, one thing that annoyed me, when I asked for the fee to be waived, the basic answer was, "The city needs the money." I didn't feel comfortable with that answer. When I once thought my property was clear and I inspected it personally, I spoke to the inspector and he said, "There's a shed in the property below your property that I never saw." There's never been a structure above my property and that's what shows in the pictures from the fire department.
Okay. Thank you. By the way, I feel comfortable with that answer because we're fiduciaries for the taxpayer's money and we don't just give it away when the city follows the processes that are established under the law. Fire Department, notice.
Yes, the subject property here, which is located at... On Ravelo Drive. The property was actually inspected and cited for brush clearance violations. The issue of the notification, it was sent to his property address that was on record here on Sepulveda and it was not returned. So, it was assumed that the property owner was thus properly served.
He sent it to the address of record that you got from...
The assessor.
County assessor.
Yes.
Okay. All right. As to this business of, did you really clear his property or somebody else's and was it really proper?
We utilized... The department utilizes parcel maps by the county assessors with dimensions that depict where those boundaries are. The inspector goes out and utilizes those numbers to make a determination of where those boundaries are.
And you sent out crews that have done this before?
Yes. Sent out crews that has done this before and there is a structures that are within 200 feet of his vacant lot there. And so, it was thus contracted and cleared.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move the assessment.
Okay. The assessment is approved. Thank you, Mr. Barr. The next case is Alan Miller for Diana Miller. Give us one second, Mr. Miller, while we find out what page you're on. Oh, I think I see you at the end of my book here. 235 in my book?
Yes.
Nash Drive?
Yes. 235.
Okay. Page 235, Mr. Miller, you have two minutes.
Diane is the owner of the property. She had a stroke a few years ago. She was a schoolteacher, 35 years, LA County, inner city, but the stroke left her completely, you know, paralyzed, can't talk, can't think, can't move, can't eat, completely incapacitated. So, obviously, she didn't handle the brush clearance for the year of 2007, couldn't. Notices were coming. She didn't respond to things. She has a caretaker there. My son, Stefan, who doesn't understand the boundaries, I don't understand where the boundaries, I don't understand the parcels. I don't live there, haven't been there in 35 years, but he spent $2,600 in response to one of the notices, using a contractor that was recommended by the city. I guess he had a list of recommended contractors and apparently, the contractor's not guaranteeing his work, one of the recommended contractors, and the $2,600 was spent.
Do you have a receipt for that?
Yes. Statements five and six. I don't know if you have my... And also, the parcel numbers don't match. That alone should mean something, too. The notice for the noncompliance has one parcel number and the invoice for the assessment has a different parcel notice. So, the parcel numbers don't match. That's another thing. I mean, you take any one of these issues and there's a problem.
All right. I just want to understand your issue.[1687.83]
Okay.
Is there an issue about notice? Are you saying that you were not, that the owner of record was not notified?
Well, she was notified, but she can't, she's completely out of it.
But...
Totally out of it.
Okay. So there's not a notice issue?
The issue, the issue on the notices is that they don't match. One notice had a parcel number that did not match the assessment parcel number, and you can see that in there, too.
All right. So you're saying that you all nonetheless cleared, but you erroneously cleared the wrong area?
It could be the wrong area. It could be, could be the wrong area, yes. The notice has a parcel number, and the assessment has a different parcel number.
Okay. Let's ask the fire department to respond to that, please.
All right. The subject property here, it's a vacant lot.
Sorry? Say it again, please?
Excuse me. The subject property here that we're considering, we're considering here is a vacant lot off of Ridpath Drive. Ms. Diane Miller actually owns two properties. One of the properties here that is parcel number 5567015017 is the one that was cited for brush clearance violations and was not signed off and was cleared by contractors. The other property is also a vacant lot owned by Ms. Diane Miller, which is parcel number 55667014036, which is the notice of violation that you see in the packet that Mr. Miller here has provided. That property was signed off and was cleared. However, parcel 17, which is in our book, is the parcel that we are referencing. So that would explain the two different numbers.
He's saying that, he's saying that the statement that you've brought forth, you are not being assessed for, it's for a different piece of property. Do you understand that claim of his?
Okay. That's possible.
Okay.
But, but still, you know, $2,600...
Right. For that, to clear that property, and you're not being assessed for that. He's saying it's for, that's property A. He's saying you're being assessed for property B. Is that correct, Fire Department?
That's correct. Parcel 17.
Well, yeah. But I'm assuming Stefan says to me that he's, he brought out a contractor from a city recommended contractor to handle, I guess it's E Lot or something, that property that, you know, that the city came out and redid afterwards, and this guy is a city recommended contractor that's not guaranteeing his work. In other words, the city came out and did it...
Well, well, now that's, okay, that's a different question, okay? You're here because the fire department says that property A was cleared and property B was not. That's what the fire department's saying, and we take their word for these things, because this is what they do. Now, if you're saying you hired someone, or someone in your family hired someone, and you directed them, "Go out and clear properties A and B," and they didn't do all the work they, they were supposed to, then maybe they owe you money, but I don't think the city of LA does. Mr. Zion?
Does the fire department have a list that they provide to residents for brush clearance?
Yes, we do. It's also on our website.
Is this individual under the vendor's?
I, I don't have that confirmed.
I'd like to have that matter.
What is the name? Do you have the name?
The one, there's a receipt from an individual.
Juan...
Juan Rodriguez, Rudy Rodriguez, landscaping and tree service.
No, he's not. I can tell you right now, he is not one of our licensed contractors, one of our qualified contractors.
Are you saying that this was given to you by the fire department?
That's what my son says, yes.
They don't have him as a record of...
We have no record of Rudy Rodriguez.
I think we're going to move on on this item, sir, and, you know, I'm sorry that your family's in this situation.
One more thing, because when I did write this appeal for the president of the Board of Fire Commissioners, they granted the appeal based on this stuff. Now, same guidelines, same kind of appeal, and you guys are saying, you know, you can't, we can't grant the appeal. That doesn't make sense either.
If they grant your appeal, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
If they grant your appeal, you wouldn't be here.
This is right here. This is a granted of an appeal. Just got it, by the way, a couple of days ago.
What's the parcel number, sir?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a noncompliance. This is brush clearance.
You're not complying with inspections, you're in the...
That was your noncompliance inspection fee.
But it was, it was granted because of the information about her strokes and not being able to handle it.
That's not what's before us.
Yeah.
That's a separate matter.
Well, if she's not able to handle it, I'm not responsible for it.
Well, sir, sir, as I say...
How is she responsible for it? How is she going to deal with it?
You said, you said Stephen is taking care of her. I noticed the check was written by him, so obviously, he's a conservator for her, or...
No. He's not responsible for her.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on. Sir, we apologize. We're sorry that your family's experiencing whatever it's experiencing, but that, that aspect of, of the family's struggle is not properly before the city today. This is all, this is...
Well, what about the burden and, and at least getting rid of the administrative fee? She's living on a teacher's pension.
Well, you're...
I mean, she's on a teacher's pension.
That's, I don't believe that we, as fiduciaries for the city, are supposed to deal with that today, sir. That's, that's unfortunately something that you have to deal with, just as many other people have had to deal with the problems in their life. So I think the committee is going to approve the assessment, and we appreciate your time today, sir.
Can I ask, what's the next appeal?
The matter will be before the council on the date that Dwight said.
July 30th.
That'll be for final action by the full city council.
You can appeal it again.
You can appeal again. This is one appeal. It proceeds to the council for final action by the council. The next item is Brian Ditman, or it could be Didamani, and I apologize, it's either your handwriting or my eyes. One moment, sir, while we find your page in the book. Take it away, Mr. Ditman.
Okay. My concerns are really threefold. The first is that I share some concerns about the due process and the fairness of the hearing process. Also, in my case, the property is also subject to a boundary dispute, and the actions of the contractor involved, the bottom line, the contractor just didn't do the work, that the work was done before the contractor...
City contractor or private contractor?
City contractor.
You retained a city contractor to do the work?
No, the city, the city did.
So you're saying that $2,800 is excessive because they didn't do the job?
Correct. Also, the bidding process as described was not the bidding process that was described to me. They described the bidding process as the inspector, David Riles, would take the entire volume of the lot, the entire size of the lot, and create a bid, and factor in things like how steep the land is, and then submit that for acceptance or rejection to the contractor. How this happened is that I hear voices outside my garden one day, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, what's going on. I go down there. The people run away. They don't speak English. They never knocked on the door. They never furnished a contract or an authorization letter. When I did get ahold of the brush clearance unit and they, and contacted the company, they said that the owner would be there shortly and should be there. When he did show up, he didn't have any photographs or contract or authorization letter, and basically, at that point, David Riles arrived, and the contractor went on to explain that, you know, "Well, we've done the work," and I said, "No, you actually did not." The other thing is that, since there's a boundary dispute, the entire boundary issue could have been cleared up with a city attorney, at the city attorney hearing, but no letter for a city attorney hearing ever arrived, and despite repeated requests, the brush clearance unit has never been able to produce one.
Okay. Sir, I'm going to give you a chance, with your two minutes expiring, just name your claims to me.
That I shouldn't be liable for the inspection fee or the contractor's fee, and that...
So they didn't do the work is one claim.
Correct. And what I could not get to is that when I went to examine my file, no photographs were in the file, no contract was in the file, and they claimed at that time that I was okay, that it was cleared by owner, and so I decided not to even appeal the inspection fee for 336 or whatever it is, 338.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand what that claim is, but I just want to understand the precise claims, because I want to ask this fire official for the precise responses. Okay. Why don't we let the fire department respond to whatever they've heard?
All right. Yes, Mr. Ditman's property was actually inspected for brush clearance violations on August 15th of 2007, and was sent to, to his address to respond to those, to those, to that violation. It was still in noncompliance on November the 5th, when it was re-inspected, and the property was subsequently contracted by contractors on November the 28th, excuse me, on January the 3rd, 2008, but was posted for violations again on November the 28th of '07.
They did the work?
Yes, they did the work. We have photographs on file that show the condition of the property before, during, and after. I personally have went out to this particular property.
You personally did?
I personally did. Received...
Any problems with the boundary lines?
There is an issue with the dispute on how, where his, where he believes where his property ends. I utilize, just like I informed Mr. Ditman, that we utilize the county assessor's books, and we utilize the dimensions that it is, that it has, and we went word for word over the description of his property, and I had rangefinders, and I explained to him that his property goes a lot further than where he believes it does, and if he believes otherwise, he has to produce proof that his property goes beyond that.
Have you done that before, Captain?
Yes.
Any questions for the fire department or Mr. Ditman? Okay. Committee's going to approve the assessment here. Thank you for coming today, Mr. Ditman.
I do have a couple of things to say about that. Is it the contractor submitted falsified photographs with incorrect time?
I think, is there any, any reason to believe that there's anything false or...
Mr. Ditman did rate...
Or that has been omitted from the city's files in any way here?
No.
Anything funny about this file?
No, sir.
Okay. That's the action of the committee. Thank you, Mr. Ditman. The next item is...
When I inspected the file, they weren't in there.
Do you have the file?
It's available for review at any time you want.
If you want me with the fire department, they'll show you that information. You still have one chance, sir, to make a final appeal at council on July 30th, okay?
He only, what he...
All right. Mr. Smith just made a very good suggestion to you. You should look at the file between now and June, July 30th.
He only brought those photographs out like last week.
Okay. But they exist, okay? All right. The next matter is A.B. Witten. Let's find Mr. Witten's page first, please.
Page 203.
You have the floor, Mr. Witten.
Yes. I got a bill on May 28th for $2,182, and I paid it in March. This bill was paid in March 14th. Again, I get another bill. And I'd like to know what this bill is for.
Okay. Can we stop the clock? You can hand the bill to the fire captain next to you, and he'll tell you.
Please.
Is that the nature of your complaint?
Yes.
Show the fire captain.
This is your, your proposed assessment.
Yeah. There's, this bill was paid. It's in March.
Okay.
It's right here. Is it check number?
There are two invoices. The first invoice is for your noncompliance fee. It's when the property is given an inspection, and if it fails, then you're giving a compliance due date. We go out there for a second inspection, and if it fails again, you're issued a second notice of noncompliance. We go out a third time. On that third visit, if the property is still in noncompliance, you are assessed a noncompliance fee for $316. That is what this first invoice is for, $316.
Okay.
Okay? The second bill is for when there is a cost of clearance, when the contractor actually went onto the property and cleared the hazards that was existing and an administrative fee. The cost of clearance for your property was $1,200, and the administrative fee is $982, which comes to a balance of $2,182. So that is the two bills.
So the same amount, the first one and the second one?
Two different amounts.
Two different amounts. Same amount, yeah?
$316 for this.
$2,100.
Okay? Yeah, they're two different invoices for two different things.
Is there more than one parcel?
Just one parcel.
No, no parcel.
It's just the two different parcels.
Two bills for $2,182? $2,182?
The, the cost of clearance was $1,200. That's how much it costs to clear your property.
Okay. Yes.
Administrative fee, administrative fee was $982.
Sir, let me ask you a question, because I'm about to run your clock again. Is there anything about the nature of the clearance, about the notice you received, about the work that was done, or about your property, that causes you to have a substantive or procedural problem with those bills? Run this clock.
There's nothing clear to us. We are surrounded with about 1,800 neighbors, 18 neighbors, and every time we get a notice, the fire department is never clear to us which, what area is we have to clear, and we have a full-time maintenance. We maintain the property in a perfect condition, and sometimes, a neighbor calls the city, the fire department, and the fire department sends us a notice, and we never know which, what area, for what address, for what, and we're surrounded with 18 neighbors.
Okay. Well, then, there you go.
And we have a full-time sprinkler system, and we have full-time maintenance all the time.
All right. I think it's your responsibility, sir, to learn the parameters of your property and to clear it in accordance with the instructions of the fire department, and to clear it before the fire department gives you those instructions, and I would move that we approve the assessment, colleagues.
So first bill, we paid it in full, and again, you sent us another bill for the same amount. Then, it's right there, it was paid.
All right. As to whether you've paid it or not, that's not before the committee...
And we got a letter also, is...
I think I can clarify some things. He, he is confusing the proposed report as another invoice, and it's not. It's just a report.
All right. Sir, 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 the hearing is not going to be about whether you understand the documents or not. You can talk to people from the fire department about that, or Ms. Jackson from the city attorney. We're going to hear the final item, then we'll recall the other item. Final item... Ms. Jackson will clarify these issues for you. Yeah. That's not, that's not our job. Final item is James Payne.
James, is it Ocean Equities? Ocean Equities?
Ocean Equities, yes.
Ocean Equities should be page 91. Let me just confirm. 85, page 85.
Okay. Go ahead.
The issue I have is that, first of all, is the notice on the prior appeal, as noted on the reported proposed decision and assessment, under the paragraph of substance of protest, it was noted, but was failed to be specific, that they recognized that the notice was sent out addressed to Ocean Equities, but what was interesting is that there was no address, just a name. It was sent back to someone, I'm not sure if it was post office, a month later, sent back in another properly addressed envelope, and so we, as Ocean Equities, didn't receive the notice until much later than we should have, and we really felt that we were kind of compressed as far as having due process and due time to be able to get a contractor out there to assess the, the property. As you can see by the dates as well, it pushed us into the holiday season, which forced us to, you know, with the delays and vacations and things, but I called immediately, this is a property, it's vacant, home, we don't usually go there, and went up and noticed that there was a red tag on the gate. Immediately called the fire department, let them know that I'm putting my landscapers, at least, on it right now to be able to start cutting down the, the grasses, and then got into the process of getting a contractor. The other issue is that what we didn't see, and did notice a little bit later, that there was a city contractor that did go to the property. The extent of their work, though, did not put us into compliance. They were done, but as you can see from the pictures there in the package, there was two gigantic, large, dead trees that were failed to be cut down, and according to what was clearance there, it says, "Remove all dead material. This includes dead trees." These were not done, as well as a few other things, and as you can see in good faith is that by the invoice that we did have as a contractor we hired ourselves, we paid $4,000 in order to get the property cleared to be in compliance, and so we felt that there was some kind of an issue there that needs to be addressed as far as the fees that we're levying.
Okay. Issue one, notice.
Oh, I'm sorry. The subject property was actually inspected on November the 1st, 2007, for brush clearance violations, and it was then re-inspected on November, on November the 27th, and then subsequently, the property was posted on November the 29th of 2007, so that would confirm it is close to the holiday season. But the property was then later contracted and completed on January 15th of 2008. So proper notification was provided to the property owner, is what we can see, and the work was completed. There are pictures and photographs that are on file with the fire department record that did show that there was work done. As regards the dead trees, I don't have any confirmation of dead trees that remaining on the property. That I would have to find out, but I don't know anything about that.
Yes, but I, here's what I don't understand. It's, are you saying that they did not do $2,500 worth of work, or are you saying they Or are you saying they did not, that they didn't do any work?
They did not do some work. And I figured that, you know, if you're gonna have, get to the point where you're gonna send a contractor out, they're gonna clear your property.
You're saying they had to do work and then you still had to go in and do other work?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, but that's fine. But you're not disputing that they did work?
There was some work that was done, yeah.
All right, well, they did the work and the city charges for that work. The city has, city's billed for that work and the city pays for that work.
And the city inspected it to say it was in compliance after that work was done by the contractors, after, Captain.
That's correct. Sorry, what was that?
After the contractor did the work, the city fire department then inspected it, the follow-up inspection, to make sure it was in compliance.
Now, that's where I have issues because of the picture there. You can see it's about 50 feet away from the structure. It's a gigantic dead tree and that's the reason why?
But, 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 but you're saying-
That would put me out of compliance.
What?
That would put me out of compliance, having that-
Well, then, get rid of it. But if they're saying you're in compliance and they're charging you for the work that got you to that stage, you gotta pay for that. Why wouldn't you? Why would you have to pay for the work that got you to that stage?
I'm, well, what I'm failing to see is that, do you just come up and do part-time work or what's the reason for having a contractor come up? Do they clear the entire property or they just do some what they want?
You know, we certainly want them to do a good job. Are you saying they didn't?
Exactly. They didn't do a complete job.
All right.
I mean, for something as obvious as a giant tree that's right there 50 feet away from the house, I mean, we would immediately fall back under being a-
You know, I think it's great, sir, that you're doing the clearing now and I'm sure in the future you'll keep it crystal cleared and you'll never have to deal with this again.
Captain, what about that tree? That tree, if you put it in the picture?
Yeah, I just, I saw no photos that was produced for me to review. So I don't know anything about any trees, but I can look into it.
I'd appreciate that.
There's a photo of a tree. And I don't know if it's just dormant or if it's dead, but there's a tree without leaves.
Yeah, there may be cases where a tree may look dead, but sometimes because of the cost of clearing it out, will give the benefit of the doubt. And if it's not dead and it may recover, then we don't have to take the tree out. So I don't, I'd have to look at it and see.
Did you take the tree out? In order to comply with guidelines from the fire department, we took it out.
Okay.
And we were wondering just why, if we were being billed, why didn't they take it?
Well, I mean, you know, it's one of these, I gotta tell you, at the end of this long hearing, this is sort of this damned if you do, damned if you don't. If you take the tree out and you charge them $5,000 for the bill, he'd come in here and say, "This is an excessive bill." So in the future, pay attention to your property. That's my lesson, everybody here. You live in a desert, you live in Los Angeles. We're gonna approve the item here. And we're gonna recall Mr. Kajakian?
Did we miss one?
Mr. Kajakian?
Mr. Lee?
Mr. Lee? Pardon me?
Ree. I think it was Ree?
Mr. Lee?
Have you spoken to him, sir? Card?
Is he here? Let me have a see on him.
I don't think he's spoken yet. He's on the side.
I don't have a card from him?
I think so, yeah. Did you submit a card, sir?
Yeah.
I think you did. What's your last name, sir?
Ree, R-E-E.
Ree, Ree Family Trust.
243.
Do you want to give it to me? But that doesn't matter, doesn't matter. What page?
I got a one Glock meeting, maybe I could buy out some food during that.
What page, sir? 243. Take it away, sir.
Is it okay now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to present my objection. The case is simply charging the resident of the city for the clearance work that has never been done by the city. And I have provided the work done by my contractor prior to, city contractor came to do the work. And this was submitted to the hearing officer during the hearing that took place in June, on June 3. And yet, the hearing officer found that there was still hazardous conditions remained after the contract, my private contractor did the work. I'm challenging that because I was, I was there when the city contractor came to do the work. And I told the contractor that the clearance work has been done at my cost of $1,500. And the city contractor agreed that there was no more work to be done. So they withdrew from, from my property. And yet, I'm charging with the cost of clearing work that's never been done by the city.
So your claim is that the work, clearance work was done before the city contractor arrived at your property?
Yes.
Is that your claim? And did the city contractor then leave and do no work?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Fire department.
All right.
Was it cleared before the contractor got there? And did the contractor do no work?
Fire department records indicate otherwise. The property was actually inspected on, for initial inspection, on May 9th, 2007. It was, didn't receive a second notice of non-compliance until October the 12th of 2007. And that's when a work order was prepared and the property was posted on December the 5th of 2007. And then was subsequently contracted on January the 4th of 2008. According to some of the notes from the hearing officer is that there was some work that was done, excuse me, by the property owner, but however, did not provide the 200 feet of clearance around for the remaining structures that was on his property. And therefore, the property was, was cleared. There are photos in our file that depict the hazards that, hazards condition that existed on that property. And also photos of the contractor doing the, during the work. So the contractors were actually out there.
Okay. To understand, Mr. Ree, the fire department is not saying that you had, that you had not done work. The fire department is saying that the work was not sufficient to comply with the 200-foot clearance rule.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't constitute, that give the city right to bill me for the work that has never been done.
So you're saying, the city, are you saying the city did no clearance?
No clearance at all.
Was there no clearance at all done according to fire department records?
Fire department records indicate that the property was cleared by our contractor.
This gentleman says it's a total scam and fraud. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
I am, I am-
Can you show the before and after pictures? Do you have the before and after pictures?
I have, we have those on file at record in our office, yes.
We used inspection by a fire department inspector after it was cleared.
Yes.
I would suggest that you show those pictures to Mr. Ree before July 30th when it comes to council.
All right.
And we can resolve that matter at that time if there's some conflict still. But I would suggest we, I'm concerned, I wanna see, I'd like to see the pictures myself, actually.
Well, I'm not, I'm not contesting the pictures. I wanna see the proof of the city, the work, so that the charge is proper.
That is the proof, sir, is the pictures we take before with the work and after the work. And if it shows work is done, then work was done.
The city has never done the work, period.
And that's what the pictures will show. If the pictures don't show that-
Well, then, I wanna see, I wanna see the contractor's invoice charging the city for the work they did on my property. And that's the, that's the least, you know, right that I have.
Between now and July 30th, can you please show Mr. Ree the documents and photographs that you have in your file that indicate that work was done and that professionals have signed off and inspected, as Mr. Zine indicated, that the work was done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in the meantime, we will approve the assessment here. And if there's some reason that it, when you look in your file, you discover that poof, nothing was done, please tell us.
Yes, sir.
And that'll be on July 30th.
Happy apartment?
On July 30th, we will have final approval before the full city council. In between that time, you're to look at the file, to see the invoice, to see the pictures. If you still believe that no work was done, you'll have-
No work was done, I-
Sir, we've heard that. You're gonna get an opportunity, look at the file, look at the pictures, look at the evidence. If you still contend that it's not factual, then July 30th, the matter will be held before the full city council. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. That'll be, that'll be the action on that item. Now, we're going to recall the Kajakian appeal. Ms. Jackson, if you could please join us at the table. My recollection is this is the case of the missing PH.
PH, yes.
Okay. And so my question for you, Ms. Jackson, is let's assume for the sake of this discussion that through absolutely no fault of anybody's, PH was omitted from the mailing that was sent to this gentleman. And so, letter got to the address, letter got kicked back to the post office, and apparently not returned to the fire department. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's not returned to the fire department. Which, by the way, do letters get back to you when they are returned to sender?
Yes.
You're the sender. You don't have any return to sender here?
Not on this record.
All right. So there, they don't have any evidence that supports the claim that it was returned to sender. But nonetheless, let's say it was returned to sender. What's the purpose under the law of posting on the property itself? And is that sufficient to uphold an assessment? And if so, why? If not, why not?
Yes, it would be because the code does provide either or or both. Either that the property owner is notified by their legal address or the property is posted, or both.
All right, Mr. Smith, you've got great ideas. We do here.
No, I, in these kind of cases, if it's a habitated property, it's different. But a vacant property, I always thought that our process, while legal, was not always sufficient. You don't know, the winds come, come up, rain, you don't know that the notice stays there. People vandalize them, take them, they get hidden by weeds. So my, I'm always concerned that that is not totally sufficient. The question I don't, I can't reconcile in my mind is that the mail didn't come back to us. So where is it? You say you didn't receive it.
I-
Not that the post office is the greatest in the world, but I would assume a postman who's standing in front of an address and he's looking at it and says number one on it's gonna look on the board and say, "Well, they're not net one, is there another one?" or something. Or then it comes back to us and that's, didn't happen. And that's what bothers me. So.
Well, I mean, the name is not listed on the board.
You're not listed on the board?
Cal-Neva is not, I am. Ternik Kujakian is, but-
But it wasn't.
This was a new, new company that was established.
So the likelihood, then, is the US post office would have returned it to us and they didn't.
I don't.
Did they leave it at the other number one, which they frequently-
There's no number one.
There is no number one. But you said there was a number one and a penthouse one.
There's a penthouse one, but there's no number one.
No number one.
There's no sweet one.
So the only one on the board is you.
There's no one. There's penthouse one, penthouse two, penthouse three, penthouse-
But a, but a postman standing in front of the place going to deliver the stuff is gonna see a number one on there. If there's no number one and the only number one's a PH one-
No, there's-
Most of them are gonna figure that out.
There's sweet 201, there's sweet 301, there's, there's ones, but there's no-
It's only 11 by itself.
It's only one. Only 11, it's a PH one, but it's a one.
No, no, there's 201, there's 301.
No, no, no.
I think you guys, I think Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith won that round.
Yeah, I think I figured that out. Okay.
But there's no P, there's no P1. If there were a P in front of the one, then that'd be penthouse one.
Which page were we on again?
About 19, 19.
I think there's a question about the notice. And if there's no notice, I know people own property, they don't inspect it every day. And if you post it legally, post it with the red sign, and it disappears and it doesn't get sent to the address, that's-
$1,400 cost of clearance here. Have you subsequently cleared your property?
Yes.
How much does it cost when you clear it?
For both properties, $1,400.
Okay. Why do we waive the admin fee here? Because the property was in fact cleared, that work was in fact done. And that's, Mr. Smith, that's, that's your suggestion, is that, because the work was done?
I think I suggested that two hours ago.
Well, now we're consistent. All right.
So it's $1,400?
Yeah.
Not for both, not for each, right? For both, for each. Well, I said-
Work is the work.
I realize that, but I paid $1,400.
Someone's got to pay for that work and it's not the taxpayer's responsibility, that's the problem.
The work was done. But those other costs we add on, we're gonna waive those.
So that's $982 waived.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that is the action of the committee.
I think-
Do I have to do anything or will I get a bill or?
Mr. White, Mr. Kajakian has a, oh, there's a written one.
Contact our office.
There's a written one. Mr. White, Mr. Kajakian wants to know physically what he is supposed to do at this point.
You can contact our office, I'll give you the information.
Okay. The final, final item, colleagues, I apologize, is there is a written appeal-
That's correct.
-that does not have a personal appearance with it. Why don't we ask the fire department to tell us what page it's on, to tell us the nature of the appeal and to tell us the response?
Sure.
Page 161.
That says Christie Halsey.
Yes.
And this is from John Kopatsis. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So why don't we ask the fire department to take it away on-
No, the package numbers are different than this letter. This letter is from John Kopatsis. And the package number, package number ending in four numbers, 4013, this is 1019.
Which letter you're- Which one PH 1?
Tell us which of the appeals.
This letter is from Halsey, Halsey, Christie Halsey.
So it's a different letter.
8150 Kirkwood.
We don't have that letter.
Well, he's gonna present the-
All right. What about this guy?
We have a letter from a man in Northridge.
Okay, we'll find, go ahead and-
Committee package.
Okay. A committee package. Different color books.
Go ahead and present, please.
All right.